Yeah, I know his dad, I know kids. But he would, when I was at...
Yeah.
These three are from us.
PM, are we ready? Just a minute. All right, it is 7:00 PM, I'll call the meeting to order if we could please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening and welcome to our January 22th Board of Education Budget Workshop. I will do the vole, Ms. Griffin is not with us this evening, find my floor. All right, Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Fermenter.
Here.
Tracy Erby.
Here.
Tom Koba.
Here.
Lauren Muller.
Here.
Kristy Creighton.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Here.
Cindy Woboynton, here. Susan Brennan is here, so there's nine present. All right, next on the agenda we have public comment. So speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Public comment is limited to agenda items only this evening, which is our budget. Public comment does not allow for two-way conversation between speakers and the board. We welcome and appreciate your comments and opinions and all will be taken into consideration. Please note our meetings are televised and livestreamed on YouTube. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody who'd like to make public comment this evening?
Hello, Erin Pinson, 27 Cedar Hill Road. Good evening, I'm here tonight as a parent, an educator, and a taxpayer, and I wish to express my strong support for the proposed budget. We all know the challenges of managing resources in today's world. Supply chain is now a household term, and we continue to experience the pressures of higher-than-average inflation rates. NPS also has significant inflationary hikes in essential supplies, rises in transportation and utility costs, and has growing contractual obligations to our teachers and staff. While the proposed 4.87 increase is significant, I know it reflects a truly lean budget focused on covering non-negotiable needs like salaries and benefits that make teaching in Milford schools appealing and competitive. It covers mandated, critical, and existing programming and keeps students' needs at the forefront. I deeply appreciate the difficult balance you must strike to continue to offer our students an educational, an excellent educational experience while also keeping commitments and navigating...
Good evening, members of the Board of Administration, my name is Kara Flannery and I live at 41 North Street. I want to express my support for the superintendent's proposed education budget for Milford Public Schools. As someone deeply invested in our community's educational future, I follow the budget process with great interest. First, I want to commend you, our Board of Education members, for your thorough and diligent review over the past two budget workshops. Your detailed analysis and thoughtful questioning demonstrate exemplary fiscal oversight and a deep commitment to our district's well-being. Your careful examination of both the proposed increase and the $645,000 in identified savings, and your focus on ensuring alignment with district priorities reflects the kind of thorough financial stewardship our community expects and deserves. Yes, the 4.87% increase is higher than recent years, but in the past, our district could offset rising costs through savings from declining enrollment. But now with our overall enrollment stabilized, we no longer have that buffer. Today's increase directly reflects our current reality, the genuine inflationary pressures and contractual obligations we face. This is a maintenance budget, pure and simple. It contains no new programs or major building projects. Instead, it focuses on maintaining our current educational standards while providing the stability we need during this critical period of long-range facilities planning. What you're really voting on is whether we'll continue providing our students with the same level of educational quality they currently receive. This budget is not about expansion, it's about preservation and stability. The identification of over $645,000 in savings shows that every dollar has been scrutinized. This demonstrates good stewardship of our resources while meeting our obligations to our students and staff. I urge you to approve this budget. It represents a balanced approach to maintaining educational excellence while acknowledging our fiscal responsibilities to both students and taxpayers. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Emily Rowland, 161 Beech Ave. I wanted to come speak to you tonight following last week's meeting where you had a discussion about the academy. I really just want to share my story with you. So I attended Foreign High School around 2016, and I started to really significantly struggle with my mental health. I was a student who had straight A's and played sports, and very quickly began to struggle and was chronically absent in dealing with school avoidance and severe anxiety. And that is why sports are not my most vivid memory, but instead I have this memory of being in a normal classroom and the bell ringing, and going up the stairs at Foreign High School and getting to the top of the stairs, and people are saying hi and laughing and talking to each other, and people are coming from red hall and going across, and everyone's crisscrossing, and I got this overwhelming sense of panic, and my heart was racing, and my hands were shaking, and from then on I basically had panic attacks almost every morning before school, and essentially stopped attending. So I was lucky enough to qualify for an IEP, and I took all of my classes in the Success Every Day program at Foreign. I even had an accommodation in my IEP to address my anxiety about just even entering the school building through the front door. And I'm very grateful for people like Michelle Sumner and Katie Firdak who worked really, really hard to try to support me in a general education classroom, but I just wasn't able to be successful in that building, and I did eventually transfer to the academy. And that really brings me to my point, which is that I fully support and believe in funding the academy. Not only was I able to have additional support, there were smaller class sizes, an adapted schedule, a shorter school day, and I really wasn't in an environment where I could work actually on my school-related anxiety, like things getting through the door, and being able to switch in between classrooms in a much less crowded hallway, luckily, instead of just continuing to avoid school and allow that anxiety to get worse. I spoke in class, I was encouraged to work with my peers, and I got to continue being educated while working on my mental health. It's the educational foundation and the resources available in Milford that I credit much of my progress and success. Not only have I overcome so much of my anxiety, even though I'm a little shaky standing here, I also went to college. I graduated summa cum laude from Southern Connecticut State University and received the Henry Bernard Distinguished Scholar Award, and now I'm in my final semester of my master's program at Fordham University. And I'm someone who truly believes that there are so many other students in Milford who are like me, who will go on to do amazing things if they're just given the chance. By fully funding the academy, I think that you have an opportunity to give them that chance. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, I'm Carrie Rowland, 161 Beech Ave. And I understand that budgets are the numbers, and that you have to give real hard look at numbers. But I stand here because I want you to look at me, and I want you to look at my daughter, who am I very, very proud of, because she can't in three minutes explain to you how difficult it was for her, starting in middle school, to face what we didn't know was a thing. School avoidance wasn't, I don't think even named until much later on. Anxiety and depression and what that took. It doesn't just happen at the school level, it happens at home, it happens with our healthcare, with our mental health care, and if we drop part of that as a school system, we are not giving kids who need these other tracks, if you will, to succeed and to find their success. Emily, in my humble opinion, is brilliant. She is a real person, she is not a number. She, you can't quantify the number of students that will show up at the academy, whether they start there right out of eighth grade or not, I listened to that meeting. It's really, really important that you see us, because we represent the numbers that you're going to discuss. And she's just one of those numbers, but she doesn't even, she doesn't even say and justify how hard she worked in the, in the scholars, the awards that she's earned as a student. She, you know, if it wasn't for the Milford Public School system, I don't know where she would be today. And I say that, you know, with all of my heart and all of my sentiment, that I want you to really think about who these people are when you're thinking about the numbers. It is way, way bigger than the numbers. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on with our agenda. Thank you for coming out in this cold weather, members of the public that came to speak with us. We move on to the next agenda items, final questions and clarifications on the superintendent's proposed budget for 2526. There was one additional question that came through, so I'll turn the meeting over to Dr. Katia.
Thank you, Mrs. Brennan, as a member of the board. There is one more question, and there's a handout coming your way. There is about everyone in the audience. And we have a PowerPoint.
Yep, so we have something visually to track our talking, because, you know, we like to talk and we can go on and on about some things. But the question to be right into the record is, can you explain how the leadership of a school district works? So, Ms. Autieri, Mr. Brennan, and I are happy to walk through that with you. Please know that we limited ourselves to a 10-minute answer to this question, albeit we feel like we won't be able to do that justice in 10 minutes. It's almost a college course. We teach it in superintendent school and principal school, so we are going to do our best to keep it to 10 minutes or less. And it's also actually a mini version of the board orientation that we do, and we did with each one of you as you came onto the board. So some of this will sound familiar. So I'm going to, we're going to walk, I'll, I'll take things off and then we'll hand things over to Mr. Autieri and Mr. Brennan. So, the school district here, in particular in Milford Public Schools, is overseen, led, and served by six key members of what we reference cabinet, superintendent, two assistant superintendents, director of PPS, and director of talent management and development, and director of business and instructional digital services. So the six people that sit at this board with you twice a month. It is our number-one responsibility to ensure that all systems support and point to the mission, vision, goals, and the nine commitments adopted by this board. So at the end of the day, everything we do is to support and achieve what the board has set forth for us. Last week, we were asked by a board member for a leadership org chart, and I will have to say that we probably mistitled it, so I'm going to make that correction in public. It was titled District Leadership 2526, but what was in front of you and what is in front of you on this chart is district and building leadership. That on this chart, you will also see school principals on this org chart, and then those senior leaders that work across the school district in classrooms. So the next org chart represents what is better now entitled district leadership. You'll notice that this, or this org chart demonstrates, gives you titles and names of, in some cases, names of individuals who primarily make up what we would consider district leadership. You will see on this org chart that it represents both sides of the organization. That's like language I use internally. There's a teaching and learning side of the organization, and there's operational side of the organization. So let me show you what that looks like visually. Visually, there is an operational side, and you will note that that is led by the assistant superintendent for business and operations alongside the director of business and instructional digital services. And then there are some direct reports. People that you know and love, I'm sure. Pat Bradbury is here, and Eileen Faustich, Jeff Nielsen, and oh, by the way, new director of business and services who's with us this evening, Mr. Cavalaro, who replaced Terry Devaney in her retirement. So, that's the business side of the organization. With intention, the director or the department of talent management and development is on both, because we believe that that department actually straddles both sides of the organization, supports teaching and learning, but also fulfills a, a basically compulsory compliance role in an organization as well. So, there are not two departments, but that department shows up on both sides, as you will see here on the teaching and learning side of the organization, led by our assistant superintendent for teaching and learning alongside with the director of PPS. And those departments are supported by leaders that you know and love, I'm sure, who come and make presentations and give you updates in what's happening in our classrooms, particularly in teaching and learning, and in special education, and in student wellness. Those individuals, just like on this side, oh, did I just, I messed up, Mr. Chanco. It's another part of the job of the director of bits. It's totally not back to superintendent. When she messes up on technology. Thank you so much, I appreciate doing that. Just as on the operational side, when we are looking at the director of facilities, business services, safety, food services, those individuals would be specialists, experts in their field. I would also refer to our supervisors in that regard, too. They are specialists in their fields. So I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Brennan, who's going to give you an overview, a little bit deeper dive on the operations side of the organization.
Thank you, Dr. Katia. So I feel very fortunate to be a part of Milford Public Schools for nearly 20 years now, and most of that time has been spent inside the schools. So I feel like there's a very unique perspective on how the operations side really supports what's happening inside our school system. And that's something that I've directly seen and worked with both sides of the organization, knowing that firsthand just how much our operation division supports our teaching and learning. So all parts of our organization are aligned to these same goals, district mission, district mission, vision, goals, commitments, all those same things apply when we're thinking about the different elements of the operational side of the organization. So when we're making our decisions, we're always thinking, how are we in service to the staff and students? How are we helping support the learning that's happening inside of that classroom? And all of our questions anchor back to the question, what is best for our students? And that's something that we always have at the forefront, I think. And although I feel compelled, like Dr. Katia said, to go into line by line, everything that we, we do in the operational side, that could take, that could take a whole semester, like she mentioned. So we're, this is a very abbreviated overview of some of the things that the operational division does to help support the teaching and learning. And when we think about the operational side of the organization, it really falls into five main buckets. Although there are a lot of different areas that kind of splinter off from this, you can kind of group a lot of these different areas into these five key themes here. So when we're talking about some of these different items you have, although they kind of get grouped into this, and although this is a quicker overview, I do feel very fortunate that we get to expand upon these very in depth throughout different times of the year. For instance, we just went through one of our regular yearly transportation reports a couple months back. Mrs. Faustich is able to give you a food service update a couple times a year. Mr. Bradbury's facilities presentation is always a board favorite. And there's also the high school athletic reports, monthly cash disbursements, quarterly budget reports. There's a lot of different elements where we can dive deeper into these things. So for our finance department here, it really provides resources to our staff and students so that teaching and learning can remain the focus in each one of our schools. And then in addition to that, we are also making sure that we are compliant with all state, city, federal regulations, and making sure that we are maximizing and being as efficient as possible with taxpayer dollars. Some of the additional things within the finance department is our budget. This is a process that never ends. So whether it's forecasting, whether it's developing, whether it's monitoring, or holding the accountability piece of our budgeting, that's something that's continually ongoing. Our payroll department also processes approximately 1,200 bi-weekly paychecks, accounts payable who are responsible for paying our vendors, completes over 4,500 purchases and 8,100 checks annually. We also monitor the student activity accounts for each one of our schools and make sure that we are compliant with all grants. Our facilities and maintenance, we, our first priority is to provide that clean and safe learning environment for our staff and students. And as you are well aware, we maintain over 1.1 million square feet of buildings in our 14 different sites, and it encompasses 180 acres. We also have our aging buildings that we are working right now with our long-range facilities plan. Many of them were built in the 50s, 60s, and 70s, all of them were built within the 50s, 60s, or 70s, and we take pride in meticulously maintaining them. And some of the elements that go into that maintenance is just the interior cleaning and maintenance, some of the grounds upkeep, long-term facility planning, the community use of our schools, making sure that we are code compliant, working very closely with the health department and the fire department to make sure that we're following all the regulations we need to, and then just the safety and security infrastructure that we have within the schools to make sure that our students and our staff are safe. Food service, we also want to ensure that our students are properly nourished so that hunger does not interfere with that learning process. We meet and exceed all federal and state nutrition standards, and we're responsible for administering all those different elements to make sure that we are in compliance with the federal free and reduced program. It is a self-sustaining program. They serve hundreds of thousands of breakfasts and lunches throughout the year, and we have over 54 employees across those 14 buildings that help make sure our students are fed. School transportation, we transport our students on a daily basis. We serve all 14 schools, we, we bring students to all 14 schools within the district, also to parochial schools, Platt Tech, Trumbull Gobag, Bridgeport Aquaculture, and ECA, Educational Center for the Arts. In addition to that, we also make sure that students are able to go to the high school athletics, and we also want to make sure that they are brought on field trips safely. So our transportation is constantly in the mix to make sure that our students are getting to where they need to go, wherever that, that may be within the school day. And school safety and security is the final bucket there, and I really want to emphasize this one, because safety and security is our number-one goal. It's our priority, and it's always going to be our priority. And making sure that we are doing everything we can do in our schools to make sure our students and staff are safe is really just on the forefront of all these different departments. So it's, it's one of those things that it's everyone's responsibility, our staff, our students, and other community partners, that make sure that our students and staff are safe. We make sure that everyone is trained and dedicated to the different elements of what we're trying to accomplish there. Employees are trained annually. We are constantly reviewing our safety plans and making sure that we are up to date and staying as ahead of the curve as possible. And Mr. Nielsen does a great job with always thinking about what's next in safety and security. And then it's just, I know I mentioned this a little bit, but just our collaboration with our city partners, our police, our fire, our health department, are something that's just invaluable, and I think that Milford has a, I don't want to use the word unique, but I think it's a very strong relationship, and I'm not sure how well other districts interact with those departments, but ours in Milford is just top-notch, and they are great community partners, and they really do everything they can to make sure they go above the odds. In addition to some of those big five major buckets there, there's some other elements that are responsibilities of the operations side of the organization, and that's just insurance, risk management, development implementation of the capital improvement plan, workers' compensation management, employee and contract negotiation, school construction grants management, contracts, lease, purchases, tax sheltered annuities, student accident recording, high school athletics and telecommunications, just to, just to name a few. This is a, not an exhaustive list, it's not all-inclusive, but just to be...
Thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you.
Can I take questions at the end?
Good evening, members of the board. I'd like to transition us over to the teaching and learning side of the organizational structure. And specifically, I want to start with launching into something that all of you have seen prior, and that's our why around teaching and learning. Everything that we do within the instructional division is grounded within these four key pillars. And as we kind of dig down further into those four key pillars, we arrive at what Mr. Brennan was speaking about a few minutes ago, and that's our commitments. And as I started to reflect on the work of the instructional division, I noted four key commitments that really grounded the work that we do on an everyday basis. And what I tried to do was identify several key words, phrases within this that really encapsulate the work that we do each day to support the commitments of our staff and students, to make sure that they have the experiences that are necessary for their growth each and every day. And obviously, some of the key things that you pull off is the work ultimately for the instructional division begins with the development of a professional learning system to ensure that our staff are equipped with the tools and the resources needed, to make sure that every one of our students has an authentic and engaging learning experience across every classroom. And that learning experience is really designed, as you can see towards the middle of the slide, to get to the MPS vision of the learner, to make sure that students possess those skills and dispositions. Our instructional division, or as Ms. Stewart and I have rebranded over the last year or so, we now call the Leaders of Learning, to bring together the efforts of our PPS and our teaching and learning department, is really a very small but mighty team. There's 12 supervisors across both departments. There's 12 supervisors across both departments, seven on the teaching and learning side and five on the PPS side, that support our commitments to our students from pre-K all the way up to our transition program, things like Parsons Perks. So over the next few slides, I want to provide a little more of an in-depth overview of some of the areas of impact for our instructional division team. And what I've tried to do here is point out five different areas that are the biggest impact for the work that we do each day. But I want you to focus on one thing on the slide, and that's the picture to the right. Everything we do in district each and every day is for our students, it's in service for students. And I was thinking the other day, I was watching a news article on CNN that talked about the fact that there was a hospital in St. Louis that actually excised the tumor completely by laser. And if you think back 20 years ago, doctors were doing all of that by hand. And as a profession in education, we are very much like medicine, or technology, or business, in the fact that we are constantly growing and evolving. We're being responsive to the needs of our kids each and every day. And if anything, we have a really daunting task, in the fact that we're preparing students in the moment for jobs that don't currently exist, or that are just coming into the forefront of existence. This means that we, just like any other profession, have to constantly revise and refine our approach. Our instructional supervisors, as Dr. Kataya mentioned at the opening tonight, bring a level of expertise. They are the specialists that support the work across all of the academic areas in the district. They are the ones who are uniquely positioned to bridge the gap between our state standards, our instructional practices, and of course, the district commitments, ultimately influencing directly student achievement. And I want to point out some of the areas as we try to connect those five together. One of the big ones that the supervisor team is really in support of is ensuring and driving consistency and coherence. And that's no easy feat. Our instructional supervisors are the ones that are ensuring that learning opportunities are relevant and accessible, not to some students, but to each and every student. Again, we've placed such an emphasis on equity and the importance of equity for our learners in district. To meet this goal, they are the ones who facilitate collaboration among schools each day. They are constantly in schools every day of the week, it's easier to find them in schools than it is in the office. And truly, if we think about one of the most important pieces, our roadmap in education is curriculum. And the curriculum is the document that ensures high-quality learning experiences. So without a curriculum, we have no way of articulating the skills and knowledge that are important for what students need. And lacking that coherence across our 491 classrooms would become problematic. Coherence also includes the work that the team does, as Mr. Brennan mentioned a little while ago, to ensure compliance, compliance to state and federal legislative requirements. Our team also works to supervise the development and oversight of over nine grants. Our supervisor team also works to support educator development in terms of professional learning. And we know from the research that effective teaching is the single most influential factor at the school level for influencing student achievement. The instructional supervisors play a critical role in making sure that the growth of our 590 teachers is done through not only the design and the delivery of professional learning, but also supporting professional learning of our instructional coaches and our school principals. And lastly, as you see data systems at the bottom, our instructional supervisors are the ones that are helping to build the assessments, and they've taken the charge to lead, collecting, and sharing that assessment data with teacher teams. And through our data structures, those teacher teams are identifying areas or gaps for improvement. They're identifying student strengths, but they're also helping to inform teachers to develop those next steps for student learning. So there really is such a high impact for what the team is doing. And we come back to that top one again, curriculum. And this is a document that we come back around on, this is our, our six- or seven-year model for curriculum development in district. And I want to remind you that our supervisors over the summer actually led the effort to organize 53 courses of curriculum development just during the summer of 2024. And obviously, this requires a high degree of organization. They are the ones who are planning the writing teams. They are supporting the expertise of our staff in developing curriculum. And at the end of the day, when the curriculum is developed, they are the ones who are getting in the classrooms to train our educators to actually put a high-quality product in front of our kids. The supervisor team in totality supports the curriculum of over 300 different courses, pre-K to 12, throughout the Milford Public Schools. And this group of individuals, many of who you've got to meet through our instructional highlights, is an incredibly gifted group. Out of all the professionals I've ever worked with, they are, as if you've ever seen the Willy Wonka movie, they are the dreamer of dreamers. There's not a single day that they're not thinking about dreaming for our kids, whether it's new career pathways, it's new concurrent enrollment courses to provide students the opportunity for earning college credit while in high school, or even internships. They are doing that work each and every day, they're bringing that level of innovation to the table. And lastly, we talk about the systems of professional growth, which is one of the most important pieces. And if you take a look at the interlocking circles, these are really the layers of professional learning that are encapsulated within our teacher learning subsystem in Heron District. And just as we mentioned earlier, our supervisor team is spearheading consistency of the various levels of professional learning throughout the system. They are the ones that ensure consistency in the vision so that buildings align with our district goals and our priorities. Whether that is improving math instruction, or strengthening the elements of our HQI model, they are the ones who are planning and leading that work in district. The supervisors obviously develop the facilitation plans, they lead a lot of that professional learning. And I want to remind you that many of our supervisors don't just oversee one department, they're overseeing two to three different departments, ranging anywhere from six to eight schools. The teams continue to bring together educators from different schools and different grade levels, they're looking at how standards progress, either within a course or across multiple courses in sequence, and they're bringing staff together to do that work. And lastly, our supervisors are the ones who are conducting our district-wide needs assessments. They're identifying our professional learning priorities, and we're bringing the team together to make sure that we set the tone for the work that we're going to do to continue improving and growing each and every day. And lastly, as we mentioned, I said to you a little while ago that if teachers are the single most influential element to supporting growth in our schools, our school leaders are right close behind as a second. And our supervisors are the ones who are also going in and working with principals on a daily basis to ensure that they're supporting their professional learning and helping to coach and model professional learning strategies that they will then take into the building. So I wish I had all the time in the world to sit and really highlight the work of the team, there are so many great things going on, and obviously, you've heard a lot of that through the instructional highlights, but wanted to really just capture some of the key elements of the teaching and learning side of the organization this evening. I'll turn it back over to Dr. Kataya.
Well, how many take any questions from the board?
Thank you.
Staff, with that great overview, I learned some stuff today. Do you have any questions from board members on this? Ms. Mahler?
There was a question, I blinked and I missed the number. You referenced something specific about the, related to the curriculum cycle, with the number of cycles, curriculum.
Fifty-three courses in terms of summer curriculum development?
The summer curriculum.
Yeah, in totality.
Okay, in total.
Oh, in total? Three hundred courses, over 300.
Okay.
I think the exact number is 309. You're welcome.
Other questions? All right. And Ms. Glennon, we do have a follow-up to a question from the other night, is that okay to do now?
Yes.
I'll turn that over to Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Dr. Kataya. Ms. Glennon, so a question came in specifically about the increase in account 6,100 non-instructional supplies, and I think it was more specific to the central admin piece of that makeup. So that account covers operational, non-instructional supplies, which include facilities department, business office, maintenance, bids department, our IT department, and the safety and security as well. And although this account says central admin, it provides a lot of items that go to staff and students directly at the school but are purchased centrally. And even though we have continually discussed the large increases in the cost of supplies and other related items, the majority of this increase could be attributed to security guard uniforms, which are on a regular replacement cycle, and the RFID cards that the students have, those are the ones that they use for getting on the bus, swiping for meals at lunchtime, and also taking out a library book. And we replace those cards for entering sixth grade, entering ninth grade, also 11th grade, all new kindergarten students as well also receive those cards, any new students to the district, and in addition to that, anyone that loses their cards.
So do I understand what you just said correctly? In grades six, nine, and 11, you replace the cards on a regular cycle?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Is that, Mr. Smith?
Just one quick follow-up. How come both in nine and 11, just a wear and tear of a high school student, or is there a reason that?
Yeah. It's both, it's wear and tear, and if you look at, it's really their eighth grade picture, that's their ninth grade. By the time they're 11, they look completely.
Okay. I figured there was something that I didn't understand, so thank you. That makes total sense.
Those cards are also used for the SATs, so you want to make sure they look as close to a student as possible, so there's no question.
Thank you.
Those little things you say, that. That explanation was sufficient?
It was, thank you.
Any other questions on anything that was discussed tonight? Any other clarifications needed from board members before we get into the next agenda item, which would be approval of the budget? Okay, we'll move forward then, thank you, Dr. Kataya. Just to give a reminder, I mentioned this last year, I'm going to mention it again. As we get into adoption of our budget, we start with a main motion that typically reflects the budget as presented, which needs a second and discussion. Anyone can offer amendments, which again, would have to be seconded and then discussed. We then would vote on an amendment, and if that passes, it becomes the new version of the motion, the main motion. If it fails, then discussion reverts back to the original motion for further discussion and then a vote. Do you have any questions on that? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Wolf Whitten, do you have a motion?
A move that the Milford Board of Education approves the superintendent's proposed 2025-2026 budget as presented in the amount of $115,304,923, and directs the administration to transmit it to the mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Fermer, your seconds. Ms. Wolf Whitten, do you have any comment?
I do. First, I'd like to thank Dr. Kataya and members of her cabinet for their excellent presentations over the series of workshops, and also thank my colleagues on the board for asking such great questions. You know, if it was, to be 100% frank, if it was a different fiscal climate, I would be suggesting that we add money to this budget. But it's not that kind of fiscal climate that we can afford that. And as wonderful that would, as that would be, it would not be practical. That said, you know, I have heard many people say, how can we afford this budget? But my response is that, how can we afford not to approve this budget? This is a budget that is so bare bones that I think that the word lean is generous in some ways. To me, it is skeletal. And frankly, I'm a little bit worried about what might happen down the road, just because there are so many things that we can't predict. But I think that when we're looking at, you know, what we want to do with this budget, should we vote for it or not, keeping in mind that, you know, of that 4.87% increase, that, you know, 2.68 of that, if I'm getting my numbers right, are salaries and benefits that we can't control. And transportation and fuel, they have gone up exponentially, which we all feel in our pocketbooks at home as well. We have special educational services that have gone up, we have operational costs that have gone up, and these are all things that we don't have a lot of control over. But what we do have control over is how we spend the money that we have. And the fact that the administration was able to cut $640,000 out of our current budget and ensure programs like our core curriculum and athletics and the professional learning that we do, that they are all going to move forward so that there aren't necessarily going to be sacrifices to our students, to keeping them moving forward and becoming their best selves, to help our professionals who are teaching them move forward and become their best selves. That is still happening, and I think that's a really extraordinary thing, that we're able to balance so many things at one time. So I plan to vote yes on tonight's budget. I hope that all my colleagues will consider doing the same as well. I truly believe that we can see in the numbers, and I think it was only just exemplified and made exponentially more clear by the presentations that we got tonight by Emily Rowland and her mom, about just how important it is that we don't just look at the numbers, and that we think about who they are serving and how we're best serving them as well. And I think this budget is going to do that moving forward.
Thank you. Please, your hand up, Ms. Glennon.
Well, I've struggled with this. I agree that the budget covers the basics of what's needed, what we anticipated, the contractual costs. I don't feel we have all the information to make an educated decision. We discussed the true number of students this year at the academy. I think we owe it to the taxpayer, who the reason, are the reason we're sitting here, to lay out financials of an entire building, and what is showing is 17 students. It was made clear in the language that the detail is detail, there's detail in the budget, there's very specific intentional wording, but I'm not comfortable with estimating and speculating what the population will be, and for a building that we know needs $9.4 million in immediate needs. A suggestion, and only a suggestion was made to the board, we decided not to pursue any financials any further, but I feel we owe it to the transparency to the taxpayer, as this is their money we're working with. I've spoken with parent friends who had a student at the academy and has a student at the academy. They understand the questioning that may come up with the predicted, what's showing again in the budget, the number of students, and, you know, questions should be asked. But given this, I don't feel we have all the financials on behalf of the taxpayer. I'm going to abstain from this vote, I don't think it's just a clear cut yes or no.
Thank you. Other comments? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I guess just real quick, wanted to thank the administration and folks here for this budget process, and I think that I really want to thank the folks who came out the last few, it's been really It's been really exciting the last month or so in seeing members of the public here and then also attending our community conversation. And I just want to recognize that this budget is one of the two big projects we're embarking upon. And I think that some of the, some of the things that were, that have been mentioned over the last few weeks are more apt and better suited for the long-range facilities plan that we're working on. And that is one of the really, one of the things I'm really proud of doing on this school, on this board, is being able to figure out what our path is for the future. And at that community forum, we had over a hundred folks show up and dozens of folks who talked about how they moved to our community because of our schools and the school system that we have. And there were, there was one, one parent I spoke to who were, I guess, a parent who no longer has kids in the school system, but was very proud and challenged us to dream bold for our students. And this budget in front of us is certainly not that. It is a very austere budget, but paired with the other work we're doing, long-range facility plan, it sets us up to do that big, bold dreaming and set our students and our facilities and our schools and our community up for that, that future that will continue to drive people to want to move here and also keep the great folks in town that we have here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Other comments? Mr. Kova?
I'll echo everybody else's comments on thanking Dr. Gataia and the team for putting together a very detailed bottoms-up budget that was, had everything, a lot of information in it. And plus, you answered dozens of questions that we followed up with. Being the numbers guy I am, follow on what Ms. Whitten said. The first thing I did was say, "Well, how much of a real increase is this?" And when you take out the salaries, the, you know, salaries and benefits, you take out the transportation increases that we knew we were getting into. And then if you take out the mandated right-to-read information, it's a point seven percent increase. In days of four percent inflation, that's, that's an incredibly good job. You balanced what we had to cover by taking out the six hundred thousand plus in expenses. Not to mention that there was twenty-four million dollars in possible improvements that we chose not to even think about, knowing that we're going to defer that into the, into the long-range facilities plan. So I personally, you know, I'm definitely a yes on this budget. And I think that not approving it would not be fulfilling our fiduciary responsibilities to the students and educators and parents of the city. Because I think, as Cindy said, we, you know, I think this is a barely get-by budget for now to just try to maintain where we're at, so.
Thank you, Mr. Kova. Ms. Erby?
Thank you. In this budget, I appreciated that there were no major surprises in that what we saw here is what we pretty much discussed throughout the year. And it was hard, difficult for me to find anything or many things to question. So I appreciate that we were, I was still, I was in line with everything that was already put in the budget. I also appreciated that the leadership team that Drew explained for us here, that we have that team for the teachers. Because I imagine without that team, a lot of the programming work would be asked of teachers. And that would take some of their time away from the classroom. So I think that the team that we have there doing all of the building and the programming and the curriculum writing and testing, I think, providing of the assessments, I think that's an important part of the district, and I think that works well for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Erby. Any other questions? Discussion, I should say, discussion beyond questions. Ms. Doyle?
Thank you. I have a lot of thoughts regarding getting this budget because I really think this is our most important decision that we make all year long. And this decision we make today is a result of attending every single other meeting that is involved with today. It's not about the budget workshops. It's not about those questions asked there. Because when I come to a budget workshop, I know the answers to those questions usually that are going to be said there because it comes from learning every single time we come in here and listen to the presentations by our professional staff. What I appreciated most tonight was when I listened of how much care and dedication and how much you understand the ins and outs of this system. I could ask you a question. And if you don't know the answer, you're willing to say, "I'll come back to you and answer that." And so when I look at the budget, I do all the same things here and look at, say, "Where can we take time? Where can we go from here? What's the next step?" So it's not a snap decision of, "We're just rubber-stamping what the administration says." Because I trust that you've done the work first and are telling us as you come in, every single time, because we push on you. I know I push on you, and I ask a lot of questions when we come in here. And that's the expectation, is you're going to be able to explain your decision-making process. So I think this comes to the next part, is that the budget that we have before us fits what we need to do right now to cover our costs and continue progress forward. It's not a budget where, if we gave you half a million dollars more, a million dollars more, ten million dollars more. We have the capacity to use that money. We're not asking, and you're not asking for that, and we're not going to do that. So I think, right now, I'm voting for the budget. I will say yes to it, absolutely. I think we need to continue with our facility study, and that's where we can focus on the next level of efficiencies. A district that has as many schools as we have can always, can always be efficient. But I don't think at any point should we be making decisions of efficiency at this level when our point and, and our role is to determine what's best for the district. It is on the Board of Finance and the Board of Alderman to make any cuts that, whether or not the city of Milford can afford it. Our vision is to make sure that the Board, the, we provide the best educational opportunities for the students in our community and support our teachers and everyone else who makes this district run and supports our community generally. So, thank you again for your efforts and appreciate all your work when you come in here every single day, to the entire team in here.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Mahler?
So, it's hard to feel like we broke a record after a while because I like to reemphasize the fact that budgets are numbers, but that's it. The numbers are really just the surface manifestation of everything that they symbolize. The budgets are the programs, and the programs are the vision and the visions for the kids. And it builds down or up, however you choose to draw that shape. But we spend, the month of January, we spend our budget workshops digging into the numbers and to what they mean. And we spend the entire rest of the year a lot more hours than I was promised when I signed up for this gang. But we spend the rest of the year digging into and learning about and questioning the programs and the strategies and the decisions that go into building those numbers. Sometimes we ask more questions than anyone would care to have. But that's our job. That's what we do. It's to, it's to not sit here and smile and nod in January, look at numbers, say, "Great," and then move on. It's to spend the time in the months leading up to that to really understand what is going into the creation of those numbers. And to make sure that we, as a board, are doing our responsibility. We have put forward a vision for the future of Milford that involves making sure every student that comes through our doors has access to the opportunities of a future that is changing. As Mr. Alteri said, we are preparing them for jobs that don't exist today. And that brings up its own set of excitement and its own set of challenges. But it's all part of that vision that we ensure through our work every month when we come in here is being driven forward by the programming and the people that are put in place. This budget simply reflects the numbers that are necessary to bring that to life. This document, all of its details, all of its lines, we dig through, we look through, we ask questions about. But as, as was said, we already know a lot of what went into this because we have been doing this work already. We've been doing this work year-round. It's not a surprise. And in addition to that, we are also embarking on the long-range facilities plan, which, to be fair, we are not embarking on. We have been going on that thing for a while now. So that is something that is well underway, full steam ahead, very exciting. We'll determine a lot of the big, bold shape of what that vision looks like in the future, what the structure is, what the footprint is, what the buildings are, to support that vision. And the programings and the budget will reflect that in the future as those decisions are made. So premature to preempt any of that process at this point. One thing that I very much appreciate about this budget is that it also enables us to fulfill that vision and bring that work to life in a way that is grounded in the fiscal reality of where we are right now. It brings a level of fiscal responsibility to this budget, to this school system, to this part of our lives in Milford that is very important right now to everyone at home, whether you have kids in the, in the system or you don't. Very much up in year, very challenging times, costs, all of that. But someone referenced it earlier in public comment. This is a, is a budget that allows us to maintain our trajectory and the quality of what we are providing to our students while also maintaining a level of stability as we get through this particular phase of time. So a budget that is both maintaining and stabilizing is all that we can ask at this point. And to be able to do that in a way that, when you account for, as Mr. Kova was saying earlier, when you account for the contractual obligations that we are required as a district to provide for and to pay for in the coming years, the contractual obligations across salaries, across insurance, across benefits, across transportation account for eighty-two percent of the increase of this budget. When you take that out, what you have left is a fiscally responsible standard that allows us to continue our work and to make the bold decisions in the parallel processes that we are undertaking and to do so in a way that is responsible and still allows that vision to come to life. So I appreciate how much work went into this from the teachers on up. I appreciate the building principals coming forward and sharing all of their needs individually. And we will get there. We promise that we will get to those. I know over, what was the number? Over two point, nearly two point four million was requested. And there was about a hundred thousand provided, a hundred and ten thousand if we're being exact. So we will get there. That is coming. But for right now, this is a budget that threads a needle that is very small, but very, very important. And I think it's our responsibility as a board to support it and continue on with the next steps.
Thank you, Ms. Mahler. Other comments? All right, so for myself, you know, I'm not going to rehash what everybody else has said because my fellow board members have said it more eloquently than I ever could. Thank you for that. I, you know, just do want to acknowledge that, yes, I agree this is a maintenance budget. There's no new initiatives in it. If there were, I'd have no problem looking closely and suggesting we scale back if I thought there were things that could wait. But the reality is, those contractual obligations and operational costs continue to go up every year. There's just no getting around that. Our job as a leadership team with administration is to identify the priorities, define savings, and to put, put forward a budget that meets the needs of students and staff. As a board, we don't have revenue sources or undesignated funds that we can tap into when, if needed, the way the city does. And yet, administration did find that six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings that they used to offset the increases. So they did the work for us, and I don't see any additional areas to reduce. But I want to acknowledge that investment in our schools, staff included, continues to position our students for future success in the job market, as was mentioned today, a job market that we really don't know what, what, what it will be like in a number of years. From the youngest learners all, all the way up, we need proper resources, technology. We need relevant and diverse programming, all the things that are encapsulated in this budget to help ensure that we have positive experiences for our kids because they are the workforce of tomorrow. They are what, what, they are the people who will sustain our economy as time goes on. And in the end, great schools in a community benefits everyone, the kids, businesses, and the community at large. So I think it's prudent for us to support our schools, and I fully support this budget. With that said, I will, I'll take, Ms. Preet has already indicated she's going to abstain, so I'm going to go right to a roll call instead of asking for yeas and nays. Ms. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Fermander?
Abstain.
Ms. Erby?
Yes.